All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners public hearing for this Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. It's 3:01 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is the Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Carolina Mejia, County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. Was that all audible at least?
Yep.
Okay, very good. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed amendments to and renewal of Ordinance 15792, Interim Emergency Housing Ordinance, originally approved June 25th, 2019. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify, but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Leah Davis, Associate Planner, will provide information on this topic. I will read names on the signup sheet. Assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, I will then, or the county manager will call your name. You do not need to sign up in any other fashion. You'll have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now open. Leah will present background information of the proposed amendment, summarize written comments submitted, and provide any additional information requested by the Board. Leah, see you upper right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leah Davis with Community Planning. This public hearing is to accept and consider public testimony on a proposed amendment and renewal of the interim emergency housing ordinance. This public hearing is not to consider any current or future permit application for a homeless encampment site, and the action available to the Board following this hearing is not related to any current or future applications for a homeless encampment. The public hearing and decision by the Board are only for the regulatory language that would allow the Director to waive some requirements related to permitting. This ordinance is separate from any proposed RV safe park or homeless encampment, and to date, there have been no encampment permits issued, so no land use regulations have ever been waived. Following the public hearing, the Board has the option to amend and renew the interim regulations or let them expire. The renewal will apply to the rural county and the urban growth areas of Lacey, Tomwater, and Olympia. Again, there have been no homeless encampments approved under this ordinance in the county or the UGAs. So first, a brief background of the ordinance. Interim Emergency Housing Ordinance Number 15792 was first adopted by the Board on June 25th, 2019, after the Board of Health declared homelessness a countywide public health crisis. On June 9th, 2020, the Board renewed the interim regulations under Ordinance 15902, amended and renewed on December 9th, 2020 with Ordinance 15948, and renewed as amended on June 9th, 2021 with Ordinance 16026. This ordinance will expire December 9th unless the Board takes action to renew it. Under the Growth Management Act, renewal of interim ordinances is effective for six months. If the ordinance is not renewed today, it will remain, if it is renewed today, it will remain valid until June 9th, 2022. The Board has reviewed the Interim Emergency Housing Ordinance at a briefing on April 1st, 2021, and received updates on this proposed amendment and renewal at agenda setting on October 5th, 12th, and 19th. At those agenda setting sessions, staff provided a summary of the minor amendments as included in the public hearing draft. The minor amendments as included are based on feedback from the prosecuting attorney's office and the CPED director, and would add language to the emergency waiver sections to clarify which fire requirements are non-wavable and require CPED director to consult with stakeholders prior to enacting any emergency waiver of regulations. So the options before the Board today are to renew the ordinance with the minor amendments or to let the ordinance expire. An action is included on the agenda if the Board wishes to renew the ordinance after this public hearing. Because there is no regularly scheduled Board meeting on December 7th due to budget public hearings, today is the last opportunity the Board has to take action on renewal of the interim regulations. So I'm going to provide some details about the ordinance, the emergency ordinance. The interim ordinance does the following. In order to facilitate effective and timely service in response to the public health crisis, it offers an option to waive some code requirements for permitted homeless encampments. Under the interim ordinance, and only with an emergency resolution by the Board, the Director of CPED may waive certain requirements. A waiver by the Director is allowed for a six-month period, but can be extended beyond six months if the Board holds a public hearing and finds that a public health crisis in the form of homelessness continues to exist. Following is a list of requirements that can be waived at the request of a sponsoring agency during permit review. Limitations on size, maximum number of residents, parking standards, distance from a bus stop, right-of-way limitations, visual separation from other uses, keeping a log of residence, requiring verifiable ID, having a security tent, allowing visitors, maintaining a numbering system, and requiring liability insurance. Also, the prohibition of the use of heating and cooking appliances within RVs can be waived. The standards that are allowed to be waived are generally not related to public health and safety. The Director does not have the option to waive the following regulations. The requirement for sanitary portable toilets, standards requiring structures to conform to building codes, fire safety requirements, requirement of the host to provide a code of conduct, requirement of encampment residents to sign an agreement to abide by the code of conduct, requirement of the sponsoring agency to self-police and self-manage, and the Director cannot waive the prohibition of alcohol, drugs, fighting, abuse, littering, or disruption of neighbors. In other words, standards that may directly affect public health and safety cannot be waived. The renewal of the ordinance does not do the following. It does not outright eliminate any code requirements. It merely offers the Director an option to waive specific requirements at the request of a sponsoring agency, and it does not establish a camp in the rural county or urban growth areas. On November 8th, the Community Planning webpage was updated with the public hearing information. Legal notice of this hearing was published in The Olympian, November 9th, 2021, and a press release was issued November 22nd for this public hearing. As of 1 o'clock today, there have been 28 comments submitted to staff. Several of the comments were general comments about homelessness or related to possible permit applications for an RV site, and not related to the interim regulations and the action before the Board. 18 comments were received related to the interim ordinance, with six in favor and 12 against, but I want to state that there is nuance in those comments. Some of the people in favor of the ordinance wanted to end. Some people against the ordinance want some different safety measures put in place, so it's a highly nuanced set of comments. And that concludes my remarks, and I'm available for questions.
Commissioner, any questions for Leah before we open it up?
Yes, Leah. How many times since its inception in 2019 has the emergency housing ordinance been used?
It has never been used, so no regulations have ever been waived.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Leah, again, what was the date it was first enacted?
June of 2019, I believe. Let me go back.
June 25th.
June 25th, 2019. Thank you.
This is our sixth look at this. It lasts for six months. Anything else? Okay. Yep. All right. Then we're going to go to public testimony. On the signup sheet, John Pettit first, Terry Ballard on deck. Go from there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out in Rich Road, East Olympia, and I happen to be helping some homeless people on my property, but that's probably not, that's probably in violation of some codes, but let's get to where we're at. I'm going to read to you a definition here first. Definition: insanity. Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. How many times have we renewed this? It doesn't work. The only reason why it might work is if a governmental agency like Thurston County was putting in an application for a permit at a location on Carpenter Road. Now, one of the things you have to recognize is that with this ordinance in effect, you as the Board of County Commissioners can give no protection to any of the neighbors that might be surrounded by a process that gets submitted by some particular applicant. Now, we know in the case of Thurston County made the applicant, you could withdraw it, and you did withdraw it based upon information you determined did not make sense. But did you know that directly next to that property on Carpenter Road, the city of Olympia owns an eight-acre piece of property? If this property was acceptable, then the city of Olympia would have the open access to go ahead and create an encampment there, which you've decided was not a good location and a good suitable fit, and yet they could go forward. The person over in the, Josh over here, the head of the department, he would be the one subject to making decisions. You've never had one of these applications go through, and typically, it'd be because the cost involved with trying to run it doesn't happen through a private sector location. What you need to recognize at this point, as far as I would be concerned, is number one, is it doesn't work the way it is, and it doesn't really give the actual protection to the people that own property in and around spots it may be. Now, I guess, a couple little quick notes. The greatest predictor of future behavior is past behavior. Okay, well, that isn't about the residents. That's about what's going to happen with this ordinance. We're just opening up a door for a program that has never worked, and at this point, it's not perceivable that it'll ever work to the benefit of any particular community. You are reducing by continuing this, and now, especially with the city of Olympia's site over there off Carpenter Road, potentially letting the city open up a homeless encampment right there where you've already decided wouldn't work effectively. I can only encourage you, if you want to create some type of emergency, which, if it really existed and able to deal with it within the elements of your interim ordinance, would have actually happened within this timeframe, that you now need to say, it needs to go in the round file, and let's start over and let's make something that will work. Something that will work not only to help the homeless or these different people, but also work with the community that it's around. I'm asking you, that basically you just make a decision. You say, this one isn't working? Let's create a new one. Let's just not make a couple little tweaks of something. Let's get rid of this one, and if you're going to create one, create one from scratch with a program that'll work, but then the final part is, create one that always has to come before the Board of County Commissioners to be approved for a location before a permit can actually be given. Thank you.
Very well. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard, and I've been a resident of Thurston County since 2004 in Tangowild, unincorporated Thurston County. For something that works, my question is, is there any money going out of it? Okay? This, this organization right here, Thurston County Board of Commissioners, has a, has an ongoing problem of spending money on something else other than what it was intended for. I'm sorry to say that helped out, that opened my eyes when you guys tried to use that as far as the atrium building, which a lot of people need mental health. A lot of veterans do need help. Okay? And to use funding where it doesn't exist, that really destroys me, even, even when I was a logistics guy for, for the US Army. Interface Works says that 70% of the, of the homeless population have a drug addiction. With all these requirements in these camps, do you really believe that they're going on all these requirements? I could say, walk, walk the walk, and then talk the talk. Okay? This, this is not happening. And today, I so, I found out that the Veterans Fund is helping people. The Homeless Fund isn't. The Homeless Fund isn't helping, they're, they're, the Homeless Fund, any, any homeless fund is keeping them homeless. The Veterans Fund requires that you be on Medicaid, requires that you be on Washington State Social and Health Services, Basic Food Assistance in order to use the fund. That's a helpful hand up. That's not a handout. Okay? That does not keep them homeless. My, my whole venture is, let's get, let's get to the problem. How many, how many homeless people were taken off the street in your district? You don't belong to Thurston County collectively. You belong to a district. Why do they try to put, why do, why do other people try to put things into your district that you disagree with? I find that as, I find that a real problem. Okay? Because you cannot control your own district. You shouldn't be there. You shouldn't be here on the Board. I understand you collectively belong to Thurston County, your Board of Commissioners, but individually, you support your own district. Where's your support? Where's your support of veterans in your district? Where's your support of homelessness in, in your district? Where's the support of mental health, drug addiction, getting people off the street? I don't see a hand up. I see a handout. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have for signup? Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Janis. Then we'll get to the Zoom folks.
It's too tough. Hi, Christina Janis. I'm a resident of North Thurston, North Thurston, excuse me, northwest quarter of Thurston County. Keep it simple and brief. I'm against moving this ordinance through. I think, as it's been stated, it's been in front of you guys, it's been extended multiple times with zero permits taken place. I think this is an ordinance that just needs to go. There are so many other avenues. I know it's not going to erase homelessness, but we're not utilizing it in a purpose that's going to solve it. So I think at this date and time, why just keep extending something just for the soundbite that it provides? So, thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Okay, let's check who's on our Zoom that wants to provide testimony.
Okay, I'm going to go through the Zoom, and I'm going to call you based on the order that I have on my screen. First, I have Ms. Sue, no last name. You'd like to provide public testimony this afternoon. Next, I have Mr. Al Hawalan. Next, I have Ms. Anna Schleck. Go ahead. You have four minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much, County Commissioner Leah Davis, County Planner and County Executive, Ramiro Chavez. I am pleased to be here, though I don't have solutions. All I know is that we all have to pull together and keep doing what we can do. This is a very tough topic. Just to refer to a couple of earlier comments here, John Pettit said this ordinance doesn't work. Well, step up to the plate. What do you have that does work? I'm somebody that has worked on the issues of housing and homelessness for nearly 40 years, and the problem, I mean, it's a very deep-seated, multifaceted problem, and there aren't easy solutions. Otherwise, we would have, you know, we would have wrapped this up about 30 years ago. From my tenure of coordinating the annual homeless census, the past 10 years or so, the primary cause of homelessness is economic. So if you're going to solve homelessness, you have to solve the economy. That's a pretty tall order. The, the majority of people who reported that they were houseless, homeless, without a permanent residence, had either been evicted, had lost their jobs, or had rent increases that they couldn't afford to pay. We're, you know, the, unless we can change the economic threshold that allows people to pay for rent, I don't know that there are any easy solutions. So we're at, we're basically looking at what other kinds of resources we can offer. Managed homelessness is far better than unmanaged homelessness. A couple of other things that I've heard, there's a lot of talk about veterans as, as if they're somehow the most worthy of houseless, homeless people. I can tell you that one of my uncles was homeless. He went to Korea as a very vulnerable young man. That was a very tough war. And while my, my dad and my older uncles came back from World War II to a hero's welcome, my Uncle Harry didn't. He served his country, and his country failed him, and he was homeless off and on since 1953. He fortunately was taken in by a church, and he wasn't even living anywhere near us, but he was taken in by a church, and then eventually put into a veterans nursing home the last couple of months of his life, but he served his country. There are a lot of veterans among the homeless. I believe the statistics, oh, I can't remember. I apologize, but you can look those up. You know, it's one of the many reasons that people are homeless. I, the other thing that people often say in these hearings is that this is a district problem. One of the earlier speakers referred to, you know, if you can't solve it in your district, don't dump it on my district. I can honestly say, from having worked for the city of Olympia for decades, that the rest of Thurston County allowed all of their homeless, all of their low-income people without resources to come to our city, and we, as staff, as nonprofits, put together the best possible resources that could be developed, and they're constantly trying to find ways to do things that do work, to help people get back on their feet, to help people get the kind of support that they need for, you know, job training, drug and alcohol counseling.
15 seconds.
Well, in short, if this was an easy solution, it would have been solved, and I really hope that the county renews this ordinance, and that for those people who think that this is an Olympia problem or another district problem, take a drive around at 6:00 AM to see who's houseless in your immediate neighborhood. They didn't take the bus from Olympia to get to your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Bill Kirkwood. Would you like to provide testimony this afternoon? No. Next is what I assume is Mr., is BJ Disencroy.
No, I have no comments at this time. I appreciate the ability to be listening to all the comments that have been given, and this is a, this is a issue that I would like to see resolved. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My apologies. Next, I have Mr. Clark Olympia. Next, I have Mr. Dan Nelson.
We have no comment. Just here to observe and support the county.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Emma Dietz.
Sure, I'll say something. I want to echo something I've said earlier.
Ms., could you just kind of state your name and where you reside in the county?
Oh, okay. Yeah, my name's Emma Dietz. Used to reside in Olympia, but this issue is really important, and the people who live in Olympia are, you know, still my neighbors, and I want to say something that was said before. I want to echo a sentiment that, you know, if, if we want to, if we want to deal with this problem, just sweeping people from their current location, forcing them to move everything they own, many without cars, to maybe a location that's more comfortable for you. Maybe you don't have to look at them. Maybe they're less seen. It doesn't make the problem go away. It doesn't make the suffering go away. And I want to make sure that when we're using our, our resources as a county deciding, how are we going to deal with this problem? It's less about, well, how do we make it appear better by moving these people, by forcing them to move? How do we actually help them, give them a hand up, like someone said? And I, I think, I think it's definitely a mistake to use our resources just to sweep them forcibly, remove them. I think that resources should be used to, to get these people into housing. And if, if we get people into housing, if we help people in that way, they have a lot less stress on their plate. There's a lot less stress for the constant need to keep yourself at baseline, the constant need for survival, and to be thinking about that all of the time. They will be able to help themselves more in a, in a way that I'm sure many people want to see, and they will be able to, to do the things that many people would see, that many people like to describe as, as productive, like, like getting a job and, and contributing to the economy in that way. Or maybe they'll, they'll help their, their neighbors even more than they already are, because a lot of these people have to look out, have to look out for each other, because that's the only way that we're able to survive, is, is looking out for each other. And when you have, you have a county just, just moving you, moving you to a different location, forcing you to do that, you're really sending a message to them that you're not, you're not really looking out for them. And I want to make sure that we're using our resources in a way that, that makes, that makes sure that we are looking out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you. I may ask, for those who are not providing testimony, to mute yourselves, please. I appreciate it. Next, I have Ms. Eva Next, I have Ms. Eva L.
I don't have a comment today. I'm just here to watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Frank Brown.
No comment, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Azaya Garza.
No comment at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Janet Holon.
Thank you. I just want to say that I know this is a really complicated issue and situation, and there are no easy answers. However, I think we need to remember the people that live and work in that street, Enson Road, how dangerous some situations have been to the employees that work around there and the patients that work around there. There have been fires. There have been people, employees getting chased by some of these homeless people. Garbage cans, they're entering buildings and leaving messes everywhere. And then you've got the people that are going over to the emergency room, St. Peter's Hospital, and all the situations with that. It's a sad situation, but we also need to take care of those people that are providing services for others and watch out for their safety and concerns also. Thank you.
Janet, could you please just state your full name and where you reside in the county?
I'm sorry, yes. My name is Janet Holon, and I live in the City of Lacey.
Thank you.
In the county.
Thank you. And next, I have Mr. Josh Pearl. And I believe he has listed as no comment.
No comment. Thanks for your time today.
Yep. Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Ken Rubin.
Is that my name, Ken Rubin?
Yep. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I live in Olympia. I feel like there's some real urgency on making a decision about this because we have some very cold weather coming up. It's basically December already. However, the ultimate solution is for all of our county residents to invest in housing for these people. And it seems like this will be temporary, but the permanent way to impact this situation is to build houses so they can have shelter and be protected. And that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Ms. Krista Suko.
Thank you. I have no comment.
Thank you. I have a raised hand about Clark Olympia. I called you before. You'd like to provide testimony. Call you again. Go ahead. You have four minutes.
Okay, yeah, my name is Stephen Hicks. I live in Olympia. I was born here, lived here my whole life. I don't really have too much to say other than having grown up here and witnessed quite a dynamic change. I feel like there's a problem that needs to be addressed, and there's a lot of deflection happening towards why people are in certain situations. And while that's relevant in a lot of ways, I feel like we are presented with a real problem that just needs to be dealt with. A lot has changed. There's a lot of Olympia that just, you don't feel safe going to these places anymore. And that's just sort of sad to see. I mean, there's whole corners of this town I don't go to anymore. And I feel like a lot of Olympia citizens, and I'm not talking like you're civilians, because a lot of them, you know, they're just not from here. But I know a lot of people feel this way, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Maureen Hill.
Hi, I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I, I believe the previous, some of the previous speakers who spoke about the need for, I mean, the ultimate solution here is sufficient affordable housing. That's gonna take years to implement, and it's gonna take, you know, multiple levels of government and private sector to accomplish that. But in the meantime, I think this option is just one of the tools in the tool chest of if something comes up, at least there are rules and regulations and guidance. And that a quote-unquote camp could be better than the current environment of being on Enson or any other multiple locations in the city or the county. So I would encourage the board to at least have this as one of the options in the tool chest. It's not gonna solve the problem. Ultimately, we need housing. But this could be an interim solution to the, all the encampments throughout town. Or at least some provide. We can't move the encampments based on this decision from out of, coming out of wherever it is, Idaho or someplace, unless you have alternatives. So if we have alternatives, at least we can get folks in a safer environment temporarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Melody Koiner. Next, I have Ms. Rebecca Wilcox, and has listed as no comment. Next, I have two phone numbers. The first one ends on 1-6-9-9. If you'd like to provide public testimony, please unmute yourself. Okay. Next, the next phone number that I have on my list ends on 0-3-6-9. Please unmute yourself. Next, I have Mr. Fred Skidmore. And I believe I have exhausted my list. If there's anybody who I missed, please raise your hand, and I'll give you the floor. Ms. Melody Koiner, go ahead. Please unmute yourself. That didn't work. That's all I have for you, sir.
Okay. Thank you for everybody who provided input. Discussion on the board at this point.
I have concerns about this at this point.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Yep.
I'm not told very often that I'm not loud enough. Okay. My concern is that we have had this ordinance in place now. I think this is gonna be our, our third extension. No, our sixth, maybe our sixth.
Good extension, yeah, sixth.
So we're going for our sixth term, you might say. And yes, this is a very important issue. But my concern is that we're, we, we seem to be in this situation where we're willing to hold certain segments of society to a different standard than others. I mean, right now, we're requiring people to get a vaccination in the name of public health. I really don't see why, at some point, we cannot require citizens that are in need and are addicted, if you will, maybe to substance abuse, or maybe they have mental health issues, why in the name of public health we can't require these folks to have treatment and then help them to better themselves? The way it is right now, we're just shuffling the problem around. We, we've done this for months now. And I don't have any success stories to point to by doing what we're doing. But I do have success stories that I could point to where treatment was mandated. And I don't know how much time the chair is gonna give me. It's gonna cut me off here before too long. And so at some future time, I'd love to spend some time talking about how mandated treatment does work. Not pleasant, but it does work. It can be an alternative to incarceration. And most people will opt for an alternative to incarceration through treatment. And that is my objection to this ordinance, that if we want to have treatment, everything in unincorporated Thurston County is kind of outside the norm of where treatment is available. And so I'm not in favor of moving these homeless camps anywhere into the unincorporated area. And in fact, I'm very concerned that the philosophy in Olympia is, well, just let them do their thing. Well, doing their thing is very detrimental to the rest of society. And I want to hold these folks accountable and help them, but I don't see another way to help them other than giving them treatment. And if we're gonna give them treatment, we have to keep them in a location where they have access to treatment. So that's my concern. I know everybody's heart is in the right place. And I also respect the democratic process. Should we decide to move on, I'll do what I can. I'm not gonna take my ball and go home. But I've been harping on this now for five years, that we need to require accountability. And sometimes it's not gonna be as pleasant as we would like, but I think it's the only way we're gonna succeed. We can get them into housing, but they're not gonna stay there if they aren't taking their medication or if they aren't restricted on their substance abuse. I'll just let it go down, sir, for now.
I mean, you know, I see this as definitely a tool in the tool shed because the point is, we really don't have housing. We've heard over the week several reports on how the housing market is for people who are making a livable income and how hard it is for them to even afford a home, let alone for someone who is struggling with their mental health or with substance abuse. I, I do agree, you know. We, we need, I wish treatment was readily available, but, you know, over the years, it's been so defunded that we are where we are just because of the past decisions that have been made that have led us where we are now. And, you know, we can't, you off, you say, you know, we need to offer treatment and then, but where are these people gonna go? We're, we're offering treatment. And, and this is the, the question, right? Where are we gonna house these people where they're receiving treatment? We don't have that. We do not have housing available. So I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I'd move to close this public hearing.
I'll second.
I move to second it. Motion is to close the public hearing. I'll, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Mejia.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Is there a board, is there a motion from the board with respect to this proposed disordnance?
Okay. Yes. Okay, I would move to approve an interim ordinance renewing and amending ordinance number 1-5-7-9-2, as previously amended, to extend interim regulations related to emergency houses, housing for homeless encampments in unincorporated rural and urban growth areas of Thurston County with amendments to clarify non-wavable fire requirements and require director consultation with stakeholders prior to implementing an emergency waiver for the term of December 9th, 2021 to June 9th, 2022.
I'll second that motion for purposes of discussion. Is there discussion on the motion, which is to renew the, restate the motion is to renew the interim emergency housing ordinance for a period of six months? Further discussion beyond what we've?
No, sir.
I guess I will just comment that every time we've had this come up, it's been tempting to go really big and debate homelessness. But that's, this is really, a really narrow legal issue about are we gonna allow ourselves the opportunity to have a conversation? A good example is the Enson Road and the hospital. We didn't know the hospital issue was gonna come up. We didn't know that potential access was being, was gonna be impeded. When, when we passed this in 2019, we didn't know in 2021 that RVs were gonna build up and impede access to our regional hospital. We decided not to implement this ordinance ultimately, but I believe it was a conversation that was worth considering. And, you know, without this tool in the toolbox, as a couple of people have said, it, there wouldn't have been any opportunity to assist Providence or, or provide any type of proposed solution to the hospital issue. And there may not be another one like that. And the fact that it hasn't been used, to me, doesn't mean it's a failure. It just means we haven't found the appropriate opportunity. It's a failure if what you're, if you, if you're thinking this is gonna solve homelessness. Yeah, that, that's not what we're trying to do. That, that has never been the construct of this proposed ordinance. It's been just to give us an opportunity in an appropriate situation to use a tool. Again, we kept saying every time we renewed it, a specific proposal would come before the board and be discussed. And that's exactly what happened. There was specific proposal about Carpenter Road and Enson Road, and the board debated it, and we landed where we landed. But we couldn't have even had a conversation like that. You know, let's say there wasn't any opposition from folks in Carpenter. Let's say there was no surrounding businesses that would have been affected. We couldn't have done it. It could, you know, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do it. And, and the situation might have been really important for people that needed to get to the hospital. So, I mean, it's just, we don't know if we will use the ordinance. But to me, that doesn't mean that we don't need to have the tool. It's never been used. Maybe it ever will be. But it's, it's certainly, I think, appropriate for us to have this, so.
Chair?
Yeah.
Could I make one comment? I'd like to ask the county manager or something. If this ordinance was to pass, does the final approval rest with the Board of County Commissioners? So somebody puts in an application, they get the process going. In the end, the location of, of an organized camp, I guess is the best way I could put it, does that come back in front of the Board of County Commissioners to give the ultimate and final approval?
What are you, what perhaps what you're talking about is two different processes. This talks about waiving some code requirements and, and provides the Director of CPED to waive those requirements as stated in the ordinance. And what you're asking is the permitting process, which is we have well-defined process as to how the permit application should go through, that eventually will, could lead to an appeal. And the appeal can be heard by the Board of County Commissioners. So there is nothing in the process that an applicant at the beginning has to, needs to have a concurrence by the board on a specific location. Because you will be involved on the, on your legislative authority if it gets to an appeal for you to maintain objectivity on the permitting process.
Okay. So through the appeal process, we would have final say?
You, you always have the final say on everything that we do, Commissioner.
Okay.
If there's an appeal.
If there's an appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, the, the decision to waive requirement A, B, or C made by the Director of Community Planning and Town Development, is he mandated to waive, you know, is he have to waive as many as? I mean, what, what's the level of discretion that he applies to deciding which of those various elements he might want to waive or not?
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak for the Director, but on the previous process they went through with the proposed Carpenter Road temporary loc- that we went through with the proposed Carpenter Road temporary location, he exercised a due diligence. And I have to attest to the fact, he was extremely diligent. And he separated himself to be part of conversations related to an application process because he needed to maintain objectivity, which he did. It was Public Health who was the applicant in this case. And, and moving through that process, he maintained that objectivity in order to, to determine what, what requirements he will be able to waive based on the application that he has received. So he has latitude based on the umbrella that you give under this ordinance, if you decide to approve it. And I believe he exercises that in a very caution and very objective way as to what waivers will be. It's a consultation with Public Health. It's a consultation with the fire. It just happens to be here, him be the fire marshal. So there's all those elements the, the Director has to weigh in before he can reach a decision. So it's, it's very diligent process.
It sounds like what you're describing is a case-by-case analysis. He's not.
There is a case-by-case because each, thank you, because each site has their own nuances. Nuances in, in whether they can provide enough separation, visual barriers, access. So all that, each site has their own nuances. And I believe the Director goes through that process diligently because no, every application is the same.
And this one that was pulled back recently, was that the first one that's ever been submitted?
The, the only one that will have been submitted. And it was a process, a learning process, a learning process for all of us to go through this process to how this ordinance could apply.
There's been a motion that's been seconded. Is there further discussion from the board?
No, sir.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nay.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do we conclude this? We're done?
Today's meeting is concluded and cut off the livestream. Thank you.